Okay. That's it.
Okay. I'd like to call the regular council meeting in Harrington to order at seven o'clock. For roll call, I'd like to show that everyone is present with the exception of Councilwoman Buritz. We have no visitors in the galley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No public comments and solicitations to the agenda.
If I may, I would like to call a vote of the council an executive session tonight, preferably after we take care of all the other business.
Okay. Are we allowed to do that without it being on the agenda?
As I understand it, yes, as long as the council votes, votes it in to take care of personnel matters.
Okay, is that a motion?
Motion. It just needs a second.
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay.
You said personnel matters?
Yes. For the record.
Any discussion or? All in favor, say aye.
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 Just for you, thank you.
No, 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 I'm good on additions.
Okay. You guys have the September 11th minutes in front of me. You have a chance to review that?
Move to approve.
I have one on the second.
I'll second it so we can discuss.
Oh, sorry.
You're fine.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, Janice.
Just on the second bullet point, just add briefly with a portion of the loan being a grant due to being a distressed city.
Which bullet point?
The construction award, the first one.
Second page?
Second page, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Fiscal year 25, PWB construction award. Second bullet point.
The Public Works Board has three classifications.
Okay. And you wanted to add what again?
With a portion of the loan being a grant due to being a distressed city. And we'll be finding out what portion that will be, but right now I don't have a percentage.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes as amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, sorry.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving right along, observe the check record for the claims that were set up last time, last meeting. Here's that check register if you guys haven't had a chance to look at it.
And that's just the observation, correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
What's the line item about check amount is not correct? For Office Depot Business Credit? First, second one from the bottom.
It looks like it was avoiding a check, so it's got the check number there and explaining why it was voided.
Check amount is not correct.
I'd probably maybe do a slash, voided or something, so it's.
Nothing further, move to, well.
Do we have a motion to?
For the claims.
Move to approve claims.
Second.
Was the mini excavator about the park?
It was partially the park. And I'll confess, there was one other job that they did while I was in town that I cannot remember what it was. It was to accomplish a couple of things. The number of water leaks and everything are just kind of blending. I can't remember. There was another supply line that leaked. I can't remember who and where, but it was, that was part of it, so.
By the park?
No, what they did with the park was they used it to get the, that broken up sidewalk that was such a problem over there.
Okay, yeah, on the south side of the park, yeah.
To get that taken up. The, the backhoe is, is beginning to show its age and it's not that accurate when he's trying to move things. So if he's trying to do delicate work, it's a little challenge. I don't know when it's, I asked them to get somebody out to do a estimate on what it is to get the cylinders honed and, it's leaking hydraulic fluid. It's just a lot of little things. There's an electrical bram that needs to be fixed before we get into the winter.
I think it's pretty tired.
So anyway, it was just with enough things to do all at once, it was worth it to go get it.
That Sunbelt rental's been pretty amiable. What do you got to work with?
Um, no, we questioned their build list last time and did not necessarily get an answer that we felt satisfied with. So.
Are we picking that up or are they delivering it each time?
They're delivering it.
Because that'll be more.
We don't.
Yeah, we don't have it.
Four hundred of that is the pickup and delivery charge, so.
And how much did he said, and I know for a used model, it ends up being arranged, but how much did you say that would be if we were to get our own?
I think we can find, what I've been able to find, just without digging deeply, is one around a thousand hours for between twenty-three and twenty-five thousand.
You just say about twenty-five, yeah.
That's a mini excavator?
Yeah.
They're pretty proud of them, a lot of others.
They're more proud of the back trucks.
Well, that too.
Let's see how proud they are of forklifts.
Sunbelt, do they give the city, municipality any break or any type of? Because I know, they're handy and close, but I know, I don't know if they're still there rolling, are they still rolling out there on the freeway, John Deere?
Yeah, we're, we're exploring other avenues and options.
What's the trans disposal fee times two? On the Lincoln County Public, excuse me, Lincoln County Department of Public Works, transportation disposal fee or?
Transfer disposal fee and it was on the invoice two times for two different days.
That's a hundred dollars. I mean, it's not a big amount, so I just wondered what. Have we, again, I'll just refresh my mind. Do we have a credit card available for getting your, even the mayor or anybody?
It arrived yesterday.
Okay.
So that should be the last time it's been anything getting reimbursed.
Okay, no more questions.
Okay, there's no more comments. Do we have a motion to approve the claims? Or wait, we did.
We did, and Janice seconded it. Stephen, motion.
Thank you.
Janice, council member.
Do they, all in favor of approving the claims, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
No opposed, thank you. Pass that one around for signatures. Mayor's comments, I really haven't had any progress, just little bits and pieces of forward motion, back and forth with the attorney with regard to the procurement plan. We're a lot closer to this, but he wants to do a deeper dive. He gave us some corrections just this afternoon. But if you guys can, I've got a couple printed copies here, I'll make four printed copies, but if you guys can take a look at this. We need to have one of these. Doesn't have to be this one. If someone wants to do something different, I'm totally good with it, or mark this one up and change the numbers, whatever you need. But we can't close out our emergency rapid response grant without this.
A plan?
Yeah. And we, the auditor is also looking for one to be in our books. So it's not on the agenda tonight, but I'm just making it that.
You can use this one, Stephen, if you get some luck out of it. Okay.
So aside from that, just really haven't had any forward motion on much of anything in the past two weeks. So that's all I have. No public comments. Motion to adjourn. Some roots.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Seven thirty.
Oh, wait a minute, executive session.
Oh, yeah.
You gotta open it back up, yeah.
Okay. Reopening council meeting for executive session. How long do we need, David?
Oh, I don't know. Half an hour? Ten minutes?
Go in between at fifteen. Half hour's a long time.
Twenty minutes. This is after the, this is the end of the show anyways.
Right?
Is this a copy to keep or is there just a couple copies to glance over?
I just printed off a couple copies.
That's fine.
But I think everyone has it in their.
I do.
Okay, so I just.
I do better with paper.
So what do we decide on?
Twenty.
Twenty. Twenty minutes?
Uh, thank you, uh, for allowing us our executive session and do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Okay.
In two seconds.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I can say goodnight, everyone.
Seven thirty-five.